Nolan?
Here.
Black?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
Markruck?
Young?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
At this time, we have a recommendation by... ...Fleischer.
This is your head. Good morning, your heavenly Father, and I thank thee for allowing us to be here, to symbol here in these chambers this morning. I thank thee for all of the blessings we received since we last came before you. Special blessings are those who are in need this morning, special blessing for those who are stressed, special guidance for those who have been given responsibility of leading this county. I also ask special prayers for our colleague, he was experienced, um, the deepest of, um, dread and, and with the death of his wife this morning. We need him to be covered by your prayers. Our city, our county experienced some hardships this weekend. Young people lives were taken. I ask special blessings for their families. Keep us all in your prayers, oh Lord. I ask these blessings by son's name, amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation and one God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
I approve a minutes February 2nd, 2015. So, so, or? Any additional additions? Eason Jackson, Sharon Encina, all the papers say a.
Aye.
Close. That's public address to the board. Now it's time for public to address the board. Anyone wishing to address the board, please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to read.
Good morning, Erica Gessiel, 5446. My family is scrambling. Mark Young is my commissioner. Well, first, I'm a tax payer. Second, I'm a volunteer in junkie county animal control. To say I'm disappointed is an understatement. When we wanted Stephanie Lazar out of animal control, that really wasn't our goal. Our goal was to have leadership and management that could control the staff so they could do their job properly. So I have a few questions. Is there still an advisory panel? I know, um, there had been Grace and then there had been Peggy's panel. Um, if there's any sort of citizen advisory panel, I would love to be on it. Um, I'm curious to know if any dogs have been neutered or spayed since February. I'm also curious to know where all of the overtime has gone. The staff has nearly doubled. There have been no adoption events, no Saturday hours, no extended hours, there's no transport, which had been overtime reasoning under Lazar. Um, I'm also curious to know if the person running the front desk has been promoted to an ACO and if so, if he's been certified. I would also like to know who's evaluating the animals. I would also like to know who's euthanizing the animals and if they are certified to do so. There's just a lot of incompetence. Shelter Pro, they've had that for over a year. They haven't been utilizing it because they were all using the same username. They were all logging on as Dr. Cohen, so they did not know why when they logged on from one computer, why booted them off the other. It took them this long to figure it out. I'm the one that told Director Wallace in his office what the problem was. He was going to have IT come out. There's my chemical burns on the dogs from the bleach and during irregular public hours, the public is kicked out of the wards for them to clean the wards. Why isn't this stuff being done like the two hours they're there before the, the hours are open to the public? So, I just submit these in writing. I would really appreciate it.
Before you leave, please, if you do have it in writing, please bring it forward to Commissioner Nolan. He's the chairperson for Governor Lance, and he's also getting out animal control.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public address to the board. Now it's time to set aside the public address to the board. We have two minutes, please. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Bethany. I'm 11-11, Bethany Bulbrak, very light, for a desk and a commissioner. Um, first, I want to pass on from another volunteer. She lives in Ann Arbor area. And again, it's about the spay and neuter. No animals have been, been spayed or neutered, so there are females in heat being kept in with the male dogs, which might imagine might cause quite a problem and quite a stir. She had a male dog out that actually hurt her on Friday, um, because of this. This falls under Rule 25, number seven, under the penal code. Um, a female cannot be housed in heat in with the males. Uh, the other concern, um, was the use of bleach. Um, I was told with Nolan that no longer using bleach, they are still using bleach. The, the major concern is, is even diluted bleach, if it's diluted correctly, causes a hazardous chlorine gas, which used improperly can even cause death between the dogs. Number one, it causes irritation. You can clearly see this on many of the animals. Not only that, but your workers are in hazard. Even a hepa mask does not do that. So, I know he's mentioned using something totally differently, which I think is probably the best, because if he can't get the correct dilution of that, then he probably needs to go to something else. So those are, those are the main concerns in the spay and neutering, um, cleaning the cages, power washing. I know I've seen that myself with the dogs in the cage.
Rachel, Rachel.
So, that is a major concern as well, because that falls under, um, the penal code, um, Rule 32 as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Public address to the board.
Good morning, Bobby Walton of Davidson. I'm representing citizens against government overreach, which of course is right. Today I've come before you over an issue that's really not on the agenda today, but I know that it's in process. And I've got some documents that I wanted to pass out to each of the commissioners, and I've given Mr. Carroll one for the record. This is going to be referred to the proposal to privatize procurement. And, um, what I, what I've given you is a, um, a set of facts that I put together when I first became concerned about this process and what was happening that I saw had the potential for, um, fraud and perhaps even not meeting the needs of the public. There are two questions that I will read to you, and then I will sit down. The top of page two, question one, is it ethical for an elected official to collude with a privately owned business or a tax exempt business organization to enrich the private interests through public money? Question number two, is it ethical for a business that does a county purchasing system evaluation to then be invited to bid on a contract to take over the government purchasing system? I have traced the ownership of the organization that did the study, and that is contained in this, in this document, and also the assumed names that these organizations have. So, um, before you go forward, I would like for you to read the bottom of page five and the top of page six of your RFQ that was, um, that was released, I believe it was last December, last November. The RFQ states that there's a protection for conflict of interest in awarding this contract. So I would like you to read that, see how that applies, and, um, as you go forward, please protect the public from the potential for fraud, not just in the current purchasing system, the one that you're proposing to, um, to go out in the public and award a contract to a private company. Thank you.
Thank you. Public address to the board.
Hi, my name is Dorrit Scandlin. I live in Mount Morris Township, Commissioner Henry's district. My question for you this morning is why are we once again taking cats to the garage? Um, a stray black cat came in on Tuesday, March 3rd, and was placed in cage 73. On Monday, March 9th, the cat appeared to be developing a URI, upper respiratory infection. Dr. Cohen was asked by AC staff to, um, take a look at the cat. Rather than taking the cat to her enclosed surgical room or the isolation ward, she chose to take this cat to the cold garage to examine it. While the cat was in the garage, it got away from her. So we have a loose cat in the garage. Volunteers offered to bring in a live trap, and we were told by the director that as of Tuesday, the cat was still loose and that they did not have a working trap. They knew the week before that their trap was not working, because we had a cat loose in the cat ward that had escaped over the weekend. At any rate, traps can be purchased at Tractor Supply, probably not even five miles from the shelter. So, I personally took a live trap in last Thursday. I was told by an ACO that the trap was no longer needed, that they had found one, and she had been setting it for the last few days, and despite that, she was unable to catch the cat. I'm concerned that she's still using the same broken trap.
Rachel.
Um, the point on this is both of these, there's another cat too that came in like a week later, again, taken to the garage. These cats were on straight hold. How are their owners expected to find them? And again, my question, we have a history of animals going to the garage, especially cats, never returning. It's just a bad place when you, the garage. So, I thought we were moving towards transparency. It seems like we're once again hiding animals.
Thank you. Public address to the board. Public address to the board. Final call.
Communication, presentation, Bishop International Airport Director. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to come down and really introduce myself to the court, but also just share a little bit about Bishop Airport. I've been in the position since officially I came, started August 22nd of last year, replacing Jim Wrights, who went off to retirement. So I've been in there about seven months, and I'm learning a lot about the community and also the, the people, and really finding out what a jewel we have in Bishop Airport out there. Uh, just as a matter of background, I came from Fort Wayne, Indiana. I was the director of operations down there and assumed the position, uh, up here as the airport director. So what I'm going to give to you is just kind of my presentation that I'm, I'm reaching out to people in the community, I'm sharing information about the airport, and I'm trying to get feedback also, what people think about it, what are the strengths of the airport, what are the weaknesses, what are the opportunities? Because I really do think we have a jewel there, and I, I'm proud of, of what we have, and I really just want to talk about it. I love talking about airports. You're welcome to ask any questions as I go through the presentation. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have, and I'll do my best. If I can't answer them right here, I can certainly get, get you an answer afterward. So with that, I'm going to start my presentation. All right, the one thing I'd like to talk about is the ease and access to Bishop International Airport. That was, the one thing that's amazing to me as I've come here is the geography of the area, and I've, I've learned it myself, I've learned the access that we have to really a large number. I mean, you can beat a Lansing in less than an hour, Saginaw in an hour, Port Huron, and almost down to Detroit. So we have within an hour's distance a pretty good sized population, and it's easy to get here. So that's really something that I, I think that is part of the story to be told, and as I've been out talking to airlines as well, it's educate them about the region. When I told them that the Detroit Pistons actually play closer to Flint, Flint and Bishop Airport than Detroit, it just, it, it wows their mind, just like it did when I first came to the area as well. So really, it's really just about education, educating people, the location, and how easy it is to get here. This, uh, it might be a little difficult for you to read, but it's, it's, it's telling the story here. We are the third largest airport in Michigan, and a lot of people don't really understand that about the airport, but in fact, in 1987, when the airport authority was created, there was about 222,000 passengers. Last year, we were just over 835,000 passengers, and if all goes well, we should be over, probably about a two to three percent gain with, with our 2015's numbers. 2014 was up 5.75% from 2013, and that was despite the fact that we had 10% less seats in the market. So we were up almost 6%, but we had 10% less seats. Yeah, there you can see a little bit clearer. So what I like to tell everyone is we are a true regional airport. We serve certainly Flint and Genesee County, but we serve a wide region, about 2.6 million passengers, what we call as our, our catchment areas. And we, sir.
I don't see any replacement of Canada out there. I recently flew up, and there was a lot of Navy and U.S. Air.
Yes, in fact, we have quite, quite a few people, and as I walk the terminal and talk to people and thank them for using the airport, I've come upon people as far away as London. London is the farthest that I've had using the airport, and it is nice. This map reflects Michigan, the, the primary, the primary part, but it certainly, and I know we've had people actually from the northeast corner of Indiana also come up to use the airport as well. Uh, but, you know, we do expand, you know, we have a, a reach like that. But our primary catchment area is the purple area there, and that's a, you know, Genesee County and Flint, and also the, I'll say the inner reaches of the surrounding counties as well. But the green is where our biggest opportunity is, that's where the, the largest number of pop, population is, and the people in the green have a choice, and we want to make sure that Bishop is their choice for, for when they're flying. So we're really out there hitting, hitting those areas as well, talking to businesses. Our marketing team is out there talking to businesses, really all throughout the region. One thing I'd like to, uh, convey, and I want you guys to know it as well, is that we're more than just passenger air service. An airport is a hub to a lot of, a lot of activity, and we go out there and, you know, we've got cargo. We've got, uh, two flights a night from FedEx, one from Memphis and one from Indianapolis that brings cargo to the region. So we have a lot of activity out there. General aviation, it plays a big part of what we do, and also we have an intermodal facility as well. So it's not just about, excuse me, passengers, it's about the total package when it comes to the airport. And I shared this story about, uh, Fort Wayne when I was confronted once down there, where somebody said, yeah, but I never fly out of the airport, what do I get out of it? And I said, well, anytime you get an overnight package or a package from FedEx or UPS, you're getting, uh, something from the airport. The airport does serve the community, not just the people, uh, flying on, uh, planes to Florida. But what I really like to convey is that we are a campus that supports small businesses. And when you, when I say small businesses, it's almost laughable, because Delta and Southwest United, those aren't really small businesses, those are very large, uh, companies. But what in Flint, at our airport, those are companies that are 30, 50 people, so they're really small businesses. And sometimes I, I joke with people that I'm, I'm a mayor of an airport, and my job is to facilitate the, the safe operation of the airport and facilitate small business. So those are just some of the businesses that we have, but we also have, we're home to nearly two dozen different companies out there, and that's really what this is all about. It's about economic generation, it's about jobs in the community. So those two, two dozen companies, there's about 575 jobs out there at the airport. So if we were one company, if the airport was just under one umbrella, we would be one of the larger employers in the area, but we're home to two dozen different companies. Now, of those 575 employees, the airport authority covers about 52 of those. So we're, we're a small part of what makes that, that whole airport tick, and I really think it's an important consideration when we talk about what contribution we bring to the community. One of the things that I hear about is we need this airline, we need this air, that airline. What I really like to tell everybody is we are served by four airlines that cover 90% of the capacity in the United States. Now, it used to be that there were a lot of airlines, and I could have even gotten a different chart that takes us back to 1990, when there were 16 airlines on here. But since 2008, you've had Delta and Northwest merge, you've had United and Continental merge, Southwest and Air Trans, and American and US Air. So a lot of those airlines, it's not that those airlines have left Flint, they've just left the industry. They've been gobbled up by partners, and, and now we're down to four. So there's a number of airlines that cover the rest of the 10%. Yes?
Oh, with regard to that, um, one concerning, I, I really love the airport, it's, it's a wonderful airport, and it's a jewel to the community. However, sometimes it's very hard to get a nonstop to anywhere from the airport, which we do have to connect to Detroit or, or Chicago. Do you foresee some improvement in that area?
The answer is we're, we're always trying to get more, more flights to different hubs. What's really happened in the industry is the number of hubs have decreased. So if you want connectivity, say to Florida, or, you know, we've got Vegas and we got a number of cities, but, you know, the, when, when these airlines merge, I'll give you the example, when Delta and Northwest merge, Cincinnati as a hub went away, Memphis as a hub went away. So those are no longer there. United and Continental, uh, went away, Cleveland went away, so that, that went away. Southwest and Air Trans, they were kind of point to point, but Atlanta as a hub went away for Air Trans. American and US Air is still too early in the mix to find out what's going to happen with their hubs, but certainly there will be hubs that will, will be lost as they merge as well. So we continue to try to find, uh, new routes and, and try to entice our existing carriers to serve more locations as well for those hubs. But the airlines are a hub and spoke system.
So, you know, foresee nonstops in the future?
I, I, the answer is I don't get to make the choice on that, but we certainly, we're out there selling them all the time. Um, I do think the market has the opportunity to go to other hubs. We've talked to each one of those airlines in the last three months and really say, okay, you serve us through one hub, and I'll give you an example, United and American both fly, you know, from Chicago. It's my opinion that the market is strong enough here to support a nonstop to Newark on United, or a nonstop to Dallas on, on, uh, American. Now, it's a matter of the airlines believing when I'm selling them, and that's, that's something we work with our air service consultants, our air service and marketing team back at the airport and myself, and we go down there and visit them on a, try to, try to be down there at least twice a year.
Thank you.
And just as a point of comparison, 90% in the United States, to get the same level of 90% of capacity in Europe, 39 different airlines cover that. So there's a lot more, uh, a lot more airlines, a little more of an oligopoly here in the United States. Talking about locations, we do have the nonstops at Baltimore, Las Vegas, Orlando, Tampa, Fort Myers, Atlanta, Minneapolis, and Chicago. As I mentioned before, I really do think we have the capability to, to do more, and that's where we, as, as an airport, work with the economic development pulse of the region to, to help sell their story and then also for them to tell our story as well. It's a, it's a synergistic relationship. We like to talk about the connections we have, certainly you can have hubs on with American and United and Delta, but Baltimore, Washington, which is a very important route for us, and this is why I really try to talk it up, but we have, you know, Baltimore through Southwest has some great connections, and they also have a lot of international connectivity there as well. So when you're looking, don't hesitate to look to Southwest as well for some options. And then also with Chicago, you know, we have six flights to that, to that airport as well, and I think that's really good about connecting, because Chicago certainly plays an integral part now in the business community here and open county, and even as we get into some of the surrounding areas.
Greg, could you go back to that commercial one side? Yeah, yeah. So from Baltimore, you can go to Charleston, South Carolina?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can. And with the connections that we have, we have, uh, a morning connection that leaves, leaves here about 6:00 AM, gets there 7:30-ish, and then you can get, you know, the connection. I don't know what time the flights are to Charleston, but those were the best ones that, you know, we wouldn't put that up there if you had to wait six hours in Baltimore. And Baltimore's very convenient to get to Washington DC if you haven't done that yet. It's a, just a nice short train, train ride down there. This is one thing that I, I just love about this airport. It is a beautiful facility, and certainly I, I assume that you've all been out there, and if you haven't, I invite you to come out, I'll, I'll give you a nice tour, but it's a beautiful facility. This, the airport was constructed in 95, and it does not, it, it really hasn't aged a bit. It's, it's like Dick Clark, it just keeps looking, uh, great for its, for its age. And, and one thing about it, and I, from an architectural standpoint, makes it easy to expand. Now, it's kind of like Dulles Airport, where it can grow right on the edges. It really doesn't look dated, and it's very nice and well lit. People who come from other areas that, you know, who see it for the first time, just really say, this is a great looking facility. I'm proud of it, I love walking through it, I love talking to passengers, finding out that people are coming from London, Ontario, uh, because it's more convenient than going down to Detroit or Toronto for them. Uh, we have a nice area for people who relax before their flights, and, and really, the nice, especially in the winter time, it's nice and sunny as you're sitting there waiting for your flight, and so it's got a lot of ambient light, which I really like, makes the light fills a little bit less.
Great.
Yes, ma'am.
Interestingly, my husband flew from Dallas last, yesterday, you start off with early, from Dallas to North or South Carolina, then to Baltimore, and then to Flint. Is that pretty custom? I mean, he was flying all day.
It's, uh, well, it's, it's Southwest, obviously, he took Southwest.
Yes.
Southwest can give you some odd routings, uh, but I do know we have a one stop from Dallas Love Field, uh, because I've taken it.
One stop.
You have actually two options on that. You can go Dallas to Baltimore, um, gets you in here about, uh, well, let's see, left there about 9:30, came in about 4 o'clock, or you could have, he also had the option to do the one stop through Tampa. I will say that Tampa probably changed because of the spring break schedule. Southwest changes their schedules to accommodate, um, their, their different loads going north, south, especially this time of year. So I don't know what, what options were presented to him, excuse me, but I do know there are one stop options, because I've taken them.
Yeah, I just thought that was rather a long day.
Sure, it makes for a long day. Southwest is a great airline, but sometimes if you have to connect, they just, it's not an upper rate of connections. If you wanted to get from here to Spokane, Washington, you're probably going to see a lot of the US.
With their leather chairs, so.
Yes, it's a great airline, I really enjoy flying them. And again, talking about Southwest, here's one of the key things that, that I found out as I'm now talking to people, is Air Trans went away, and so a lot of people think that, uh, who aren't familiar and haven't paid attention, that there's not a lot of optioning, options out of Flint. And then what I, as I talk to people, they're saying, saying, well, they're no longer on Travelocity, it's no longer an Expedia. Well, that is true, and that's because Southwest doesn't go, they, they don't, uh, have their flights on Travelocity or Expedia or Orbitz or anything like that. To book a Southwest flight, you have to go to Southwest, and that has been an interesting, uh, awakening, I guess, for some of the people that I'm talking to, uh, that they're just not, don't have the options. Or the other, uh, common misperception that, that I hear is, well, I like Flint, I really love enjoying, or enjoy flying out of there, but, you know, you have, you only can go to Detroit and then you connect there. And when I tell them, well, we don't even have flights to Detroit anymore, then that really makes them say, then, oh, where do you fly? And so, you know, we, we talk about all the connections as well there. So southwest.com is the way to go. Why fly Flint? Obviously, I'm going to tell you that why, because it's your hometown airport, and it really makes a difference. When, uh, the airlines know when people in Flint are driving down to Detroit, they know you better than we do, so, uh, they, their goal would be to have all of you fly to Detroit, and certainly Delta's goal would be that. So, but fly out of here, you know, we have the lowest average airfare in Michigan. Now, it's getting tighter, because Detroit has Spirit there, which really is drawing down the fares, uh, but Delta's helping keep them up, so it keeps, keeps a balance there. But with the lowest average airfare in Michigan, you can shop there. I don't know if you've seen the billboard that we have out there on 75 as you're going south, when people are passing, just saying, you've just passed the lowest average airfare in Michigan. So we want to get people to stop driving to Detroit, we want them to stop, start flying out of, uh, Bishop. Uh, we have 90% of the market when it comes to the airlines. We have affordable parking. People love that and they love the ease of access. It's 800 feet to walk from long-term parking into your gate. So it's really not a long walk. Facility is beautiful, free Wi-Fi, pre-checks. The TSA pre-check has been a great thing for the business traveler. You can now, if you're signed up for pre-check, you can walk in, keep your laptop in your bag, your belt and shoes on. So that's really a nice thing as well. So I'm out getting the word out. I tell people I'm the head cheerleader for the airport. Besides my responsibility of running the day-to-day and making sure that everything's getting done, I'm out here being the head cheerleader. I really, in my short time, have come to really enjoy this facility. I'll say I knew about the facility. I knew about the work that Jim and his team was doing long before I came here. And I wouldn't have come here if I didn't think it was a good facility to be at. But it really is something that I want to get the word out. I want to get more people flying out of here. There is no reason, we had 850,000 passengers. There's no reason why we can't be a million and a half passengers here. We certainly have the population of Florida, too. So that's my number-one goal, is to go out there and talk about it. And I urge anybody who wants to follow us, to get on Facebook and all the other ones, Twitter. I'm not on all of those, but certainly if you're interested in finding out what's going on, I encourage you to get on there as well. I'm happy to answer any questions and invite any of you to come out to the airport at any time to see what's going on.
Thank you. Couple of questions. First off, does the airport receive any of their overnight tax to help you with advertising or anything else?
I don't know if we get any of the overnight tax. That's a question I, they give the hotel. Yes, I'm just unaware if we get it.
Second question, and that's to put you on the spot. How is proposal one that affect our airport?
Is proposal one the potential highway?
Sales tax.
The sales tax. You know, that's, we don't quite know yet. We're working with our state trade association to find out exactly how that is going to impact us.
You should get by the act 51, if you're still in Florida.
We think we will, but we just, it's really a little early for us to tell. We're actually going to discuss it tomorrow and we have a state meeting in Lansing as well to get more information. So I can provide that information, maybe provide a little bit of white paper for you guys to see what the impact to us will be.
It might help this year move forward. I know you're limited what you can do.
Sure. Yeah, it's interesting. We were a little disappointed in 2014 that some of the proposals that we, as an airport community, not necessarily Bishop, but an airport community in Michigan pushed through, but none of those were accepted and then the legislature made way of the ballot. So we're getting our act together and tomorrow we'll really be, we're going to get a lot more information out of that.
Do you guys gather any information from passengers, like marketing, future marketing or anything?
Would you say maybe surveying now?
I'm thinking it'd be nice to know how many passengers spend the night in Genesee County to fly out of Bishop County.
Sure. Historically, we have not. I'm looking at an initiative that we did in Fort Wayne that I thought was very successful. Survey people on our wireless, who access our wireless with a two-or-three-question survey, to find out where they're going, where they're from, and what their thoughts on the airport were. It really was an information gathering tool for us in Fort Wayne. We had about 500 people a week respond to that. So it gave us a lot of, I'll say more anecdotal, certainly not quantitative information, but anecdotal information that we could get a sense of what people thought about the airport, what little things, while they're using it. There's little things as maybe changing tables in the bathroom. Some things you're just too close, you can't see the forest through the trees, and then your passengers and your customers know you, what they really think. That's something that I'd like to bring in here to get more information on that.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thanks for your presentation. Thank you. All right, moving on. Week one, resolution rescinding commissioner appointment to KWA operational board.
I guess it could be moved before the discussion. Someone's work. I don't see a copy of the text of the resolution rescinding. Secondly, I don't see any backing to move this forward. I mean, we can't point to it anyway. It's all, it's a recommendation. That's what it was treated as. I don't see any game other than your tag on me. Thank you.
Any other?
I agree with Commissioner Henry. I see another sort of measure, I have to say. If you don't have the power to appoint, you don't have the power to rescind, again, unless it is some kind of unrecommended effective measure, so I think it's pointless and doesn't make sense. So I can't, that makes it pointless.
Commissioner, no.
My question is for future movement on the board. Because when this is done, this was done as a board action, I think in 2013 or so. So I think to just, so that we won't have this as a precedent. Because we can't remove you anyway because you're an appointment of Jeff Wright. So I think this is just a correcting action that the board couldn't have done anyway when it was done. So I think that's just to kind of correct the record. If that's my understanding, because I've done a little bit of research on it and looked at it. And I think that's just to make sure that we don't set precedent moving forward that we're just going to remove.
No further discussion, ma'am. Go ahead. Commissioner.
I guess if you don't have a vote to appoint, if you don't have the power to rescind, so the precedent of this thing would be very odd. If indeed, I have seen the original language, I'm not clear on exactly what they're doing. But it was clearly treated as a recommendation. If we know that moving forward, we know that moving forward. There's no reason to rescind something it was developed to begin with. It's treated as a recommendation, so it seems to be.
Excuse me, Tom. Wasn't this voted on by board action?
It was.
And was done in a way that we shouldn't have done it anyway?
It was a motion.
Not necessary.
But looking at, it was a recommendation.
We don't need to mail a copy of the motion from this. So we really don't need no one to move.
We do. The motion was passed earlier before. It's been a package. You brought to us a legal opinion from the grand commissioner. I met with the grand commissioner.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, about copying the exact motion from September 25, 2013. I'd like to see that copy.
Sir.
Because I know for a fact that communication with Mr. Wright, Mr. Wright said it was an advisory appointment. It's all the motion was. At that time, that doesn't change today. It's nothing more than a tag on your part. We're not over giving.
Right, just take off. Molden?
Yes.
Black?
No.
Curtis?
Yes.
Northrop? Young?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Adams?
No.
Motion passed.
Mr. Chair, before we move forward to the next part of the agenda, I did want to comment because this is something that falls under the question on the matter that is brought forward. Nice to meet presentations regarding related to purchasing RQ. That was presented on Wednesday. EPS, a company quoted by MAC, Michigan Associate Counties, presented on Thursday as very likely to be their ethical case note since I don't leave any decision in this area. Has far-reaching consequences and requires careful examination of information about proposing companies, their intended process and specifics for very deliberate loss. The companies were far more different than I would have expected, with one clearly offering an outsourcing measure and the other offering comprehensive, well-integrated tools that allow purchasing to be greatly approved while remaining in house with county oversight. While that's the greatest difference, there are many other differences as well. I am concerned that there seem to be a lack of notification. I would not have known that these presentations were capable of place except that Commissioner Young mentioned that the purchasing mission was bad and there seemed to be an irresistible problem with getting routine contract approval for state books. So I asked some very direct questions of the purchasing manager. I'm talking to him at the men's board meetings. There was a very clear attempt to prevent my attendance at that presentation. And I'm not clear on whether that was because of wishing to find all information to a select subset of the board or if it was my gender. That has been suggested to me. I was prevented from providing an evaluation. There was a reference to a memo that advised the purchasing manager to only allow those pre-selected to weigh in. Hopefully, there will not be any prevention of access to further information. I think that it's important. This decision regarding purchasing will impact many things. Access to full information is critical. So please remove the obstacles to that. This discussion should include all commissioners with access to information. Rating by a select few is not an acceptable substitute in this case. The public needs to view the debate and offer comment. So I'm asking that any move to bring a purchasing resolution forward is preceded by some process.
Thank you. Community Economic Development Committee, Attorney General Chairperson.
Move C1 Resolution for Planning Question Proposal Analysis of Waste Management Event Safety Report.
Support. Any discussion on C1? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Move C2 Resolution Overnight Travel for Matter One to Attend Michigan Recycling Coalition.
Support.
Any discussion on C2? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Move C3 Resolution Authorizing Submission of Proposal to MDQ for 2015 Community Protection Commission Grant to Establish Texting and Recycling Drop Off Application in the City of Flint.
Any discussion on C3, Commissioner Henry?
Mr. Bradshaw, there's someone that's represented.
Good morning.
Good morning. Is this a new brand, brand opportunity?
Yes, a brand-new grant opportunity that we took a look at. We think latex paint is probably one of the hardest things for us to deal with. And so we thought it would work well to go after this one.
Is there a simple solution to separate C1 and C2 models?
I don't know. This one's more dealing with trying to reuse it and put it back into actual people's hands, which is probably the best thing you could ever do recycling is actually just reuse the product.
But actually, latex paint, the best way to dispose of it, isn't it a good dry out?
Correct. Latex paint is not hazardous. The best way is to dry it out, either open the lid, put kitty litter, there's a whole host of different ways to try and get rid of it. Our attempt is to actually get some value from that rather than just kind of dry it out, throw it clean.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bradshaw? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed. Do we have the fourth and chairperson in the next?
Yes.
Thank you for your report. Minutes committee, Mark Gobler.
Move F1 Resolution Reform Expedite Action Establishing Two Vital Records Division Deputy Court Positions Authorizing Filing Positions Temporary Applications.
Support.
Any discussion on F1? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Move F2 Resolution Reform Expedite Action Eliminating Within the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney a Bledged Paralegal Assistant Position in Establishing and Filing a Paralegal Position.
Support.
Any discussion on F2? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Move F3 Resolution Accepting Treasurer's Interim Investment Reports Board.
Any discussion on F3? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Move F4 Resolution Approving GRC's Directors' Increase in Hours.
Any discussion on F4? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed. We have the chairperson.
No business.
Thank you for your report. Commissioner Henry.
Throw you to Chair. Does this follow in line with our retirement policy?
Which part?
On the employment side, Mark?
As far as the resolution approving the GRC directors' increase?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry.
I'm, 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 I'll take assumption that it does. I think that's something that we have to look at and make sure if there's any discrepancies on it. Actually, for us here.
Okay, that probably answered that. I didn't see, thank you.
Little correction to the issue is that I'm not asking for increased hours. I'm just asking to be paid for the hours I work. So it's a little bit different. But no, I'm still, I'd still be a part-time employee no better than C.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Government Operations Committee, Brandon Oden, chairperson.
Move G1 Resolution Paying County Bills.
Support.
Any discussion on paying the bills? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Move G2 Resolution Authorizing Sheriff to Accept 2014-15 Hazards Material Emergency Planning Grant Agreement.
Support.
Any discussion on G2? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Move 3 to G3 Resolution. Okay. Resolution authorizing Sheriff to apply for an acceptance of FY 2014 State Homeland Security Program Grant for Equipment and Training.
That's right here.
FY 2014?
Go ahead, the professional gentleman. Any discussion on what you're looking at?
What's your question, Mr. Chair?
About the right year.
It was right here, 2014.
1415.
No, please, in reference to the motion.
Okay, resolution authorizing Sheriff to apply for and accept FY 2014-2015 State Homeland Security Program Grant for Equipment and Training.
Support.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Move G4 Resolution Authorizing Overnight Travel Treasury Accounting Systems Coordinator to Generation Mission Support Treasury Association Basis Institute Training in Mount Pleasant, Michigan, April 19th through 24th, 2015.
Support.
Any discussion on G4? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution approved, move G5, I'm sorry.
Support.
Resolution approving six-month extension of the healthcare consulting service contract involved consulting.
Support.
Any discussion on G5? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Move burial clinics.
Support.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Move travel clinics, support.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed. We have the chairperson.
Yes, a quick report. I will address each one of these questions that were posed by the person who came up and spoke earlier. I do know that there are some things that are taking place related to extended hours for animal control. And I met with a young lady from across the street, Mrs. Vicki Van Bruin, as possibly be the person that we will add to the Animal Lobby Subcommittee for the City of Flint representative. And I will be talking with the Subcommittee Chairperson for Animal Control after this so we can see about putting these together. Because I know that that's something that we've talked about and we really need to expedite that so that some of the questions and concerns that we have in the community can be addressed. So that is in the works. And I will be addressing these. I'll get them to you as soon as possible, probably within the next day.
Commissioner, you put that together with you after you.
Yeah, I'll copy everybody.
Thanks. Human Services Committee, Brandon Oden, chairperson.
Move H1, A Resolution Authorizing G-Card Submission of the Annual Head Start Grant Application for 2015 to 2016 School Year.
Any discussion on H1? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Move H2, A Resolution About Financed By Action Authorizing the Health Department Employee Travel.
Support.
Any discussion on H2? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed. Reap the report, Mr. Chair.
No report. Number four.
Public Works Committee, Michael Lance, check person.
Move B one resolution approving faded action granting utilization request to approve an equipment lease with the city of Mount Morris for computer equipment, allows the city upgrade, B S and A dot net software.
Support. Any discussion on P one?
I, I, I wanna make reference that Thomas Barneal, the city manager for the city of Mount Morris is here, and I didn't know if anyone had any questions for him or not.
Thank you for coming today. All favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Move P two resolution approving a contract with attorneys for indignant fathers, P L L C, for legal representation of indignant fathers concerning court proceedings.
Support. Any discussion on P two? All favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Move P three resolution approving contract with Express Scripps, Inc., for pharmacy benefits, management services.
Support. Any discussion on P three? All favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Great report, the check person.
No, just go.
Auditorial resolutions, preparation, which please?
Thank you.
All favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any unfinished business? Newman miscellaneous business?
Mr. Chair, I do want to comment that, yes, it becomes very obvious that there is a subset of this board which is comprised of five members, and that while complying with the letter of obedience, you are not complying with the spirit, and indeed, there is a run-gropping situation going on, which I personally observe more, and it's been evident worldwide. I want to stress to you that having the power, the by votes, to do whatever you like, does not necessarily confer wisdom. Only by having full information and discussion with the board can you arrive at some decisions. I think that was shown most notably right out of the sheets in January with some decisions that were made regarding animal control. So I urge you to rethink your process. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Thank you.
I'm changing on March thirteenth, thirtieth of the board meeting, and date April second. Commissioner Henry brought to our attention that commissioners would be at the M M L, or the, uh, the MAC conference, that Michigan Minnesota League MAC conference. And so, it's a pleasure, the board would move March thirtieth to April second, at the same time of day. Which pleasure?
Could we review our calendar for second?
Sure. Move the board meeting from March second, or, yeah, March thirtieth to April second.
It's the Thursday.
Does support that, that's an option.
It doesn't conflict with allocation, does it? You have a plan.
Remember, everybody was gonna contact the board on this meeting, because of MAC hours. And John went to work on this, 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 so it's, no, prompt with it, the motion, to this board? Any discussion on move in it? Before we take the vote, did you?
Yeah, I, I was gonna suggest that you might want to go with the committees, too. I know, applying what you're saying is that the committees will, will come Thursday, too. I, I assume that's what, what you'll consider.
All meetings? All meetings on that day. No further discussion, all favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Come through the business force, continue adjourn. Move. The air here? The answer right here.
For the Nova, when you get done with that important thing, come soon.